Wonderful service.
I'm not sure. My wife's here. Madam Mayor?
I know, I know. I have to figure out which one's calling first. Who's calling first is in the second.
Cassie with us?
Yes.
Ready?
What's the treatment?
You've got to be active.
It depends on what. So like game on or something?
No. I've got a reception I've got to go to.
Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation. Dr. Kathy Northrup from the Community Church of the Verdeces is here with us tonight.
Will you join me in prayer? Dear Lord of all, we come before you this evening in prayer to ask for your presence at and blessing of this meeting. We do this because we know that without you, we can lose our way and wander off into difficulty, danger, and confusion. We know this because we know who you are, Creator, Redeemer, Sustainer, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, and we know who we are, sinners saved only by your grace, and so we know what we need. Yet we know too that you have given us skills and gifts and minds to use in your service, and we know that in this country, we have found a form of government through which we have accomplished many good things. We remember Winston Churchill's words, "Many forms of government have been tried and will be tried in this world of sin and woe. No one pretends that democracy is perfect or all wise." Indeed, it has been said that democracy is the worst form of government, except for all those other forms that have been tried from time to time. And so we save sinners, directed by you and empowered with what we need by you, press on. So come and be with us as this part of American democracy operates in this beautiful area of our great land. Place your hand of blessing upon all who participate here to the end that what we do here tonight may be pleasing to you and good for this nation, state, and city. We make our prayer in the name of our Savior, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Kathy, for joining us. Get a roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember LaGee.
Here.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll start off with my EDC report. Does everybody remember his last meeting? They were so long that I delayed it until today. It's not that long, though. Just had two meetings. The first was the Greater Phoenix Economic Council Board of Directors meeting. We had that this morning, and it was great because it brought our governor there to our annual meeting. After Governor Ducey highlighted some of his economic and educational changes, he opened the door up for questions or comments. I took the opportunity to tell the governor about the development that's been going on here in Fountain Hills and our business growth. Governor Ducey knows Fountain Hills. He knows us very well, and I take every opportunity when I see him to bring him up to date on our town. Also present were representatives and CEOs of major corporations, banks, and other institutions. So they also got to hear that Fountain Hills is doing well and open for business. We had an interesting Economic Development Committee meeting at MAG, which you know is Maricopa Association of Governments, and that was in Phoenix, but it was solely based around education. The meeting started with a presentation by Carl Hayden High School. Their students entered the underwater robotics competition and won against students from MIT. There's a movie out about them, actually, called Spare Parts. I spoke about our robotics program here in Fountain Hills High School and the remarkable job that Dr. Paul McGillicut has done in not only establishing this program, but expanding it and hosting the championship here in our town. I always enjoy being a referee at those events, and I've written several letters of recommendation for students to get into engineering schools. The second presentation was about a program called STEM Pro Live. It's a program that every school can become involved in. It's sponsored by Maricopa County Educational Services Agency. Each month, they broadcast a program featuring a successful but interesting professional who the students can relate to and ask questions online. An update from previous meetings, the online program called Read On Arizona is now live on the Internet. And if you go to that website and click on any school in Arizona, you can see how that school is doing with AMES testing and other measurable testing data, along with demographics and other info about the, about the community where the school is. I've written to our school superintendent, Dr. Patrick Sweeney, and to the principal of the charter school, Ms. Linda Rice, to make both of them aware of the availability of these online programs to enhance STEM education in our school. And that is my report for today. Now we will go on to, let's see, proclamation. I have a proclamation for Constitution Week 2015, "Whereas September 17, 2015 marks the 228th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Now therefore, I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23, 2015 to be Constitution Week in Fountain Hills, and hereby ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787." I am now going to turn over to, you ready? Councilman Nick DePorter, who is going to provide us with an update regarding the August 28, 2016 Greater Phoenix Economic Council Ambassador Event Economic Development and GPEC 101.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks very much. I had an opportunity to attend the August 28 GPEC 101 and Economic Development Meeting, where really, I go there, I work a lot with them with my Arizona State University hat, where we try to woo companies to come into the state. But I also know our Scott Cooper, our Economic Development Director here in town, works a lot with them as well. Two major themes that came out of there, and there was a panel that was comprised of American Airlines, Director of Community Affairs, City of Surprise Economic Development Director, and then a site locator. So they had all the experts up there about what's landing companies from out of state. And Scott would certainly know more about this than I would, but the number one is the workforce. So what kind of workforce, the education you have around you, and what kind of environment is around you that you're pushing, pushing good candidates into the system. And then number two, the employers say, the easy identification of resources and the ease of working with that, that company, or I'm sorry, that municipality. So to that end, you know, it reminded me that Scott, when he came on board, really came on and did a good job of inventorying what we have, putting a nice website together, and putting our best foot forward so that the community and anyone looking inside can see what we have. So it really hit right on the bullseye of what GPEC is saying the companies are demanding when they're looking around for new locations. So we were well represented. Myself was there. Dana Sarr was there. I think he was wearing his Maricopa Community Colleges hat, but we both mentioned Fountain Hills at least two times in our, in our talks. So that's really the only update I have. It was, it was a good meeting. It made me happy that we are able to leverage the resources that GPEC has and that Scott has them as another tool on his belt to help get more companies here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for attending that meeting for us and bringing us that report. And speaking of Scott Cooper, fiscal year 2014-15 economic update by our Economic Development Specialist Scott Cooper. Grady, want to start?
Just a few words. As everyone knows, Scott Cooper is our Economic Development Specialist, and he, he's been doing a great job since he's been with the town. He's going to go ahead and give a report to the council and to the public here about the year in review from the past year, and then also where he anticipates the town is going. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you, Grady. I appreciate that. I got a Mr. out of me. I should, Mr. Miller. Thank you. It's so rare I get that.
Nice taste, Scott.
My wife does a wonderful job. I thought I'd start off with the Economic Development Update with a little bit of a larger snapshot of the, of the state, and then we'll go region and then down to Fountain Hills. But statewide, our economic development partner is the Arizona Commerce Authority, and they've had a pretty good year. They created over 18,000 jobs. They were able to support and award 69 companies and attract capital investment of about just over $1.5 billion. On the job front, that's the most in the three years since they've been tracking and since ACA's been in, since ACA's been a function. The company supported was amongst the lowest in those three years. I think that's a little bit of a telltale sign of the resources that are available. Certainly, the state is struggling with that as well. And capital invested, it's, it's hard to tell. It was half of last year, but it was equal to a couple of years ago. If you have a one large project, it can really offset those numbers. So three years is a young, young organization for this to kind of even out. So it'll be interesting to see how these track and how they move over the coming years. On a regional side, our economic development partner is the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. You've heard, we've talked about that a couple of times already. They've had a pretty good year as well. 6,281 jobs created, 32 company locates, and a capital investment of $900 million to the region. They've worked with two, almost 260 qualified prospects, and a qualified prospect is simply somebody that they've had contact with or the outside source, the businesses have had contact with them and interest in locating in the Greater Phoenix region. So what does that mean to us? Lead generation with our economic development partners, the Commerce Authority and Greater Phoenix Economic Council. I've seen from them, the two organizations, come through about 118 leads. 91 of those have been through GPEC, 27 through the Commerce Authority. I wish all of those were qualified leads. That would be great, and that would be a lot of fun. But 21 of those were qualified leads, and those were, meaning leads that we could respond to because we met the parameters of the project, site-wise, employment-wise, and so forth. Obviously, several come through that are looking for 200 acres on a project. It's not going to fit. But 21 was good, and out of those 21, we've had five that are currently active and that Fountain Hills is still a part of. Our generated active leads, and these are, we have nine current active leads, and by generated, I mean those are the ones that have come in through networking and relationships throughout the past year, year and a half, in conversations and talking and outreach, direct contact, called our offices, have responded by email or through the website. Walk-ins, it happens. We have people come up to the counter and simply say, hey, we're looking to do this or this. Do you have somebody I can speak to? Staff, they'll come over to Development Services. We're looking to do a project. And staff there has been great to immediately contact me. We sit down with them if we can or as soon as we can to help them throughout their issues and let them know what's available and how we can help. Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce here in Fountain Hills has been great. The CEO, Scott, has been a tremendous resource for, for things that they can't help with or can't answer. He sent them our way, and I've been able to work with and help with a couple off of that. And even citizens, which has been great. Residents of town have come through with projects or possible projects that they've talked with or they know or they have, they have an outside reach, which is a phenomenal resource to have. Recent projects, Tractor Supply Company, it's created about 10 new jobs and a $1.6 million capital investment. QP Egg World Trading Company, a couple of jobs, but even I think a greater balance of that is having a relationship with a large company, which, which is a QP Corporation out of Japan. To have that international flair and international access, I think, is a huge benefit to our community. Mayo Clinic, their IT administration facilities, about 40-plus employees in that, in, I should say, that, that is a spot that overtook, or they repurposed their former clinic space. And it's had about an economic impact with that payroll of about $2 million and a $400,000 capital investment, and an estimated annual revenue to the town of about $75,000. Southwest Kidney Institute, I'm happy to say that they were just issued their CFO, their certificate of occupancy today. So they're moving forward, and their timeline and plans are on, are on scale for yet this year. It'll be later this fall. So that's exciting. It's about six to nine new jobs and a half a million dollars in capital investment. Our opportunities, outreach, definitely, to continue stretching out beyond the Valley. I think I've spent the last year, year and a half, really trying to get out and network and build relationships with site selectors, developers, and, and all of our economic development partners within the Valley to kind of let them know who we are, what we have to offer. And I look forward to the time where I don't have to go to them all the time, and they can start coming to us. I mean, that's kind of the point of building these relationships. I knew at the beginning would be a lot of me being out there and meeting them. It's fine. We've got to do that, and we'll have to continue to do that, certainly. We need to start with marketing and expanding outside of the state, certainly outside of the region, getting to the targeted regions of California, Texas, Utah, Colorado, Illinois, really, those are the places that we, the state focuses on, GPEC focuses on, and we'll certainly be a part of that. I'm a big believer that the more activity we have, the more activity will attract. Positive, love's positive. So I think that's a good thing for us. The fun stuff, business retention and expansion. This is the so-called easy stuff. We already have these people. They're here. They like it here, and we hope to keep them here because they like it here. So we need to work with them on that. This is arguably, I don't think it's arguably, but arguably the most important part of our economic development plan and the most important part of any economic development plan. Through, these are, both projects came through business retention and expansion meetings, where I sat down with the CEO of the company and their partners or their players, the key individuals, or C-level executives, if you will, to talk to them about Fountain Hills, about their company, about their plans, how they're doing, what their perceptions are, and how we can help. And in a conversation with Prevco, it, before the conversation, actually, I'll talk about their expansion they had. It was, it was sort of a physical expansion. They, they involved, it involved a massive solid steel testing tank, about 30,000 pounds that they had installed, and they had to expand the building a little bit to accommodate that thing. It's massive. When they had their open house for that, it was pretty impressive to see that, that huge cylinder that they test. And what they do is they test housings for electronic equipment for deep sea use, and this $30,000, $30,000 pound tank allows them to do something that can't be done anywhere in Arizona, and there's only a handful on the West Coast. So they'd get, they'll get some extra business from outside of the state to do some of their testing. So this is a good thing for them. In a conversation I had, oh, several months ago, it's late last year, a gentleman from Minne, Minnesota, Minneapolis, I believe, was relocating, bought a house here in Fountain Hills, and he called me out of the blue, and said that he was relocating his family that bought a house in Fountain Hills and were going to be coming here. And he had machine shop experience and wanted to know if I knew of any availabilities or any opportunities for him. Well, it just so happens about two weeks prior to that phone call, I had a BRNE meeting with the CEO, John Head, at Prevco, and he had talked about that he would like to start up a, a machine shop. Timing was good. I was able to put these two in touch with one another. They've worked together, and they're making that work. So it was opportune timing, certainly, but a good relationship for those two to start, and lucky for us. The, the need for employment that they had and that they always struggled with were finding engineers and qualified engineers. It got to the point they were just looking for engineers that John could work with and train. So I was able to work with ASU, and Councilmember DePorter was a big assist with this, to start a pipeline of engineering applicants for them that they have been able to use and have had success with it. So it's a good pipeline for them to have, and it's a great context. So that one has worked out well. Broker's Alliance was another BRNE meeting, a sit-down with David Raisch, their CEO, and his team, and we were talking about futures and needs and what they were going through. And it came up that they were going to be, in relative short term, going to need to hire employees, and they were having a hard time with that. And that's not what you want to hear. You mentioned, Councilman DePorter talked about workforce being a key issue, and there's no doubt about, that's number one. But knowing what their parameters were, and we actually knew what the positions were, we were able to assemble a workforce development team, which involved the Commerce Authority, it involved the community colleges and the state colleges, and the district workforce development program as well, to create a program to help them start a pipeline of qualified individuals that they could talk to and look for potential hires. And it's working. It's, it's something that's new, and it's growing, and we're really focusing on that and spending a lot of time with them on this. And they've hired 11 new people just in, just in the last few months. And this is what excites me, and really excites me, is that they're projecting 80 new additional people within five years. That's, and these aren't, these are great jobs. I mean, they are well-paid, high-positioned jobs from a local company, and it's something that we can really hang our hat on. So helping them over the next few years is going to be, is extremely vital in making sure we keep them in that pipeline, and that pipeline growing is going to be key. So having that workforce development team installed and in place is going to be key for their growth. It also means a physical expansion, which is exciting, too. So that's something that we're already working on with them for sites, potential sites here in Fountain Hills. Our opportunities, certainly more involvement and better communication with our targeted businesses, more chances for them to interact, interact with one another through CEO programs and peer-to-peer programs, and community features to make them more recognizable in our town and certainly outside of our, our boundaries in, in the state. Mayor Kavanaugh mentioned talking to the governor. That's something that we are working on as a photo opportunity with the governor and, and them, to kind of make this a little bit outside of our realm into the, the state as well. So, and as you know, he's agreeable to those things.
Of course he is.
Our entrepreneur, our entrepreneurial development partner is Jumpstart Biz. They are an incubator, an accelerator here in town. They are working with four local projects, JanitorSite.com, Quick Find Numbers, Interim Public Management, and Wired Up. These are all startup companies looking to grow, hoping to grow, establishing very early roots in Fountain Hills. And the hope of that, and the hope of Jumpstart Biz, and certainly myself, is that these companies can work through the program, get on their own, and start expanding and growing locally, and keeping those roots and roots here in town and making those deeper roots so they become key employers in the future. These are things that take time. I think everybody knows starting a company and startups is, is slow work, and, and it's important for this program to keep going, and they're doing an excellent job. Marketing. I believe everybody, and certainly it's in your packet, Councilmember Yates is holding it up, the digital postcard. That's not a digital one, obviously. It's a mock-up for everybody to kind of see with what we're doing with that. This is used as an informational driver. It's our first contact with businesses and new people. It's going to be sent to targeted businesses, corporate real estate, executives, site selectors, business development professionals, and C-level executives all throughout the country. Certainly, it'll be a targeted program. I'm working with ACA. We've got a list of several hundred names right now that these will be going out to. We're also working on a program that will allow us to send those postcards to targeted key businesses here in the Valley, just to introduce ourselves and who we are and what we have to offer. Just last week, we went live with the updated Fountain Hills ED.org website. Lost my notes. This is, it's got a new, a new look, obviously. It's a lot more professional. It's drawn in to look with, mesh with the town's website. It's got some new features. We've got a business retention and expansion spotlight, business spotlight, and a news story spotlight, as well as social media spotlight, or updates that'll come through there. This is just a snapshot of it, but it will have rotating pictures as well. We haven't set that up yet, but it's a lot cleaner look, it's a lot better look, and it was something that we were able to tag on with what the town did and I think make it much more professional-looking. The first run-through that we did was done with $0 and a lot of help from our IT administrator, Mike Chikarone, who had the, the outline laid out when I started here, and we were just able to add content and kind of get us some recognition and to give us a landing page. This is, is much more polished and prettier. There's still updates that'll be going on to it, especially the site selection search that we're working on right now as well. Certainly key to marketing, the economic development networks that's been established over the past year and a half. We need to keep growing that and expanding that and nurturing those that we've already made. Movado.com is a, a real estate website, and they listed us as the third-best play, third-best suburb in Phoenix. Nerd Wallet, I love that name. I don't know why. These are my people. Consumer Finance Group, and a consumer finance website that Consumer Finance Group and a consumer finance website that has selected us as one of the best places in Arizona to start a business. These are two catalysts that are, they're, they get me in the door. They get me to start a conversation with businesses and other companies, to be able to start with these things and, and not have to, you know, blow up a balloon to get some recognition. Now, these are great and nice to have. Our opportunities, well, we've got a couple new marketing videos that we're working on right now, and it'll be coming out shortly. By shortly, I should say six months. More social media engagement, certainly. Just launched a LinkedIn page. If you have LinkedIn, I invite you, I certainly encourage you to link to it, follow it. We just, we just launched a couple days ago. We have one follower. Thank you. We're working on it, growing. It is. And we will, we will be creating a YouTube channel. We've got the ability, certainly with the technology now, to do timely interviews with the mayor, with council members, with developers, builders, that are in our community, that are involved in our community, that we can do two-minute interviews and snap those up on YouTube pretty quick to give us some easy recognition. A lot of these are no- and low-cost options for us to reach a large area and a large audience. So we're going to take advantage of that much more in the coming, coming year. So our totals, these are great to see. Phenomenal to see after what the country, the state, the region, and certainly Fountain Hills has been through since 2008 economically. But those totals add up to over 70 new jobs and over $2.5 million in capital investment. Those are great things, and that's money to the town. And that's something, certainly, I know that was the hope of this, of the Economic Development Department when it, when it came back into play, and it's something that we'll certainly build on. Now, a nice serene picture for questions, if there are any.
Great picture.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Scott, thank you. Wow. I'm so glad. Yeah, give her a round of applause. I, I, I know, I speak for the whole council when we think that you have done just a fabulous job, and I'm so glad we've had this opportunity to showcase the growth of our economy here to our residents. And, you know, you worked so hard with John to make sure that Prevco didn't leave, because they were ready to leave. And I know that you worked like night and day to find them a place so that they wouldn't leave Fountain Hills. And, and because they didn't, I mean, that, that credit totally goes to you and how hard you worked with John. And, and as far as Brokers Alliance, I, I consider them like our hometown business. You know, David went to school with my kids, and I watched him grow up, and now he's the head of this, this amazing corporation, and he's decided to stay right here in Fountain Hills with his beautiful family. And, and we're so, we're so grateful to that, to have our kids grow up and then, and then open a business here and stay here and care that much about. I know he loves Fountain Hills.
Great example.
Yes, he's a great ambassador for Fountain Hills. But I also want to thank Jim Judge. We all know Jim Judge.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank him for his tireless effort to bring Southwest Kidney Institute here. I mean, he never gave up, and that was, that was a tough job, and he single-handedly worked really hard on that. So I do want to give a shout-out and, and thank Jim for, for all his work, and of course he worked with you, but you know all that he did to, to bring them here. So I'm, I'm going to open it up to council if you have any comments or questions for Councilman Magazine. Go ahead.
If, just, if I may, quick.
Yeah, sure.
I don't mean to interrupt, and I apologize. I, I don't want to take credit where credit wasn't due, but Prevco was, their selection was right before I got here. So I, I don't want to claim for that, that that was me.
Dude, you blew it.
I, that, there was, it was great work by the, the former town manager and staff that did it, and, and council that did all that work. You guys are to be commended for that, so great job by keeping a great company.
Don't be so modest.
I'm helping them now.
No way you did. Don't be too modest, okay?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
All right. Councilman Magazine.
Great report, Scott. Congratulations. Just a couple of questions. What causes all the leads, what causes some of them to become active leads? And when you sit down with the CEOs or whoever the staff is that you deal with, what are the factors that they talk about that they're looking at? And how do they compare those factors with other communities they're looking at?
Well, if it, if it comes from one of our economic development partners, it becomes a lead if we meet the project parameters. If they're, like I said, I mentioned before, if they're looking for 200 acres or a 300,000 square foot building, obviously we don't meet those parameters. But if they're coming looking for a 10,000 square foot office space or something along those lines, and they employ, you know, five to 25 people, you know, it's something certainly that, that becomes an active lead for us once, and I'll submit that. We have information that we submit back to GPAC or ACA, and then it becomes active at that time until they move along in the process till they select, definitely that they're looking at Phoenix and only Phoenix. They're looking at the East Valley, they're looking at Northeast Valley, or wherever they might be. It, that's when it becomes qualified to us. It goes away when they make a selection other than Fountain Hills, if they select our neighbors or another state or city, certainly. What they're looking for, and Councilman DePorter certainly touched on that, and the number-one thing is, is workforce, qualified workforce, and, which we're fortunate with. I think we're, we're amongst the highest, maybe number two or three in the entire valley of, of education here with those with a college degree or above. And so it, it looks pretty good, and certainly our range that we can draw from within a 30-mile drive time is substantial as well, with Mesa and Scottsdale being in that ring, and certainly portions of Phoenix as well, and, and even Tempe. So we can draw well, and that, but that's the number-one thing. And then it comes down to, a lot of times, reputation as a community to deal with, and, you know, incentives will certainly come into the, the conversation sooner or later as well.
Just one follow-up, if I could, Mayor.
Sure.
How often does the issue of the school system come up?
It does come up, but it's usually, those types of things are nowadays, and with the ability to do the research so far ahead of time, they've already done their homework on. They may have some specific questions based upon curriculum and what's offered, but usually by that time, they, they, they know about, as much about us as we do about, or, as we do about our own community. They, they've got their people doing their homework.
Councilman Liché.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, thanks for the presentation. Job well done. Just a quick question for you. I know that an important component of our economic development program is business attraction. You had a slide up there that talked about early results, and I know that you ED people like to have these secret codes for these, these projects that you put up there. But I was just curious, where it says generated active leads, are you at liberty to mention any particulars about any of those coded projects? For instance, Project Avatar or Project Brew?
I can tell you industry, what they, what they fall into, but, and not details, and, and I'm always sorry that I can't, because that question does come up often, and, and the reason not is because they're often in negotiation with other communities.
Sure.
They don't want their, their name out there because they're competition, or they may be in negotiation with several property owners. So, but I can tell you the types, if you'd like to know.
Just a couple, yeah?
Sure. Well, the first couple are, one's, the first is a medical engineering company. Second is a, a software engineering. Auto dealership isn't a secret. We know what that one is. That one is, already came to council once, so that one's no secret. Brewery is one I get asked about the most, and that is a brew pub.
Buy-at-home.
Yeah. Is a, I shouldn't say brew pub, but it is a, a microbrew startup that's looking for space here. Project Stay is a hotel project. Project Urgency and Honor are both healthcare-related. And Project Repeat is a company that was here once before. Got to have a little fun with these.
That's a good code, right?
And Project Treat is a frozen dairy place.
Oh, that's interesting.
Very good. I'm surprised they're not called Project Repeat also. Just one, thank you, Scott. Just one quick comment. It's, it's more of a comment. Once again, you've done a tremendous job, and I appreciate the fact that the majority of my colleagues, past and present, have been ASU graduates, and ASU does have an engineering college. But I just want to remind you, there's a school down the road called University of Arizona that has a tremendous engineering program. And many Fountain Hills High School graduates do go down to the U of A in Tucson, as a matter of fact, I think a higher percentage, and they are looking for engineering jobs. So just, just keep that in mind, and I have a couple phone numbers if you're interested.
I would take, I don't have a dog in that fight, so I don't have a preference either way. But we do work with them as well, and, and certainly have been working with them as part of the workforce development program we're putting together for Brokers Alliance.
I understand, thank you.
Not left out.
Councilman DePorter, have you ever heard of that school?
NAU as well.
I've heard of it.
You've heard of it?
No, it's not.
I, I'm going to just go to Cassie. Councilwoman Hanson's on the phone with us, and she has a comment. Councilwoman Hanson?
No.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't. Just, great presentation, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson.
Okay. Councilwoman Yates.
Thank you. Just to give a plug, University of Cincinnati, College of Engineering, top-notch college. We graduate with experience.
Oh, boy. There it goes.
Do you have some phone numbers as well?
Bearcats. I still do, quite a few.
See where you started?
Just as we're putting that out there.
Yeah, you started it.
Scott, incredible job. I, I, every chance I get, I grab Scott, and I kept him here late last night, or Tuesday night, whatever it was. But to put some facts and figures together, on average, a daytime employee spends between $3,000 and $5,000 annually. So those 80 jobs, that's up to $400,000 being spent locally. Again, that's just emblematic of how important these daytime jobs are in daytime. We talk about retail sales, and by all means, that's the driver, but we got to have folks here to, to spend the money. So you can see how just 80 jobs, that's a huge impact. So I just want to kind of put some facts and figures together. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Oh. All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
All right. I'm going to go back to Grady for a minute, because Grady has just one other thing he'd like to do.
Yeah, I just have a, a brief announcement. Thank you, Mayor. As the council knows and the public knows, we have a very highly talented staff with the town of Fountain Hills. They're, they're top-notch professionals, and we're very fortunate to have them. I wanted to introduce to you officially tonight our latest addition to the management team, and that is David Trimble. He is our Administrative Services Director. If you can come up to the podium. He was at our last council meeting and, and snuck away before I had a chance to formally introduce him to the council. I know since that time, David, you've had a chance to meet a number of the council members, but for the sake of the audience here and also the council, if you could just say a few words about, you know, your, your background and, and, you know, a little bit about your family. He is a resident here, which, he's also helping bring younger people to our town, so why don't you go ahead and share with us?
Absolutely. Thank you. And Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council and public, it's a pleasure to be here. I've got three weeks now under my belt, so I'm a veteran, I guess you could say, not really, but I have lived in the town for 20 years. I have three young children, so we are looking for, you know, looking to bring more people into town here. Lived here with my family. Last seven years, I have worked downtown at the Capitol for the State Land Department in a lot of the same role that I'm doing for the town. And so it's a great, great pleasure to be able to work in a great community like this and not have to commute. And I just want to say, too, it's a, it's tremendous to have the welcome that I've received over the last three weeks, and certainly that starts at the top. You, Mayor, and the town manager, and certainly town clerk right there have been a huge part, as well as a lot of the staff that's here. I see many of them here. So I am excited to have the opportunity to work, I could say, where I live and hopefully not disappoint anyone in the future and continue to carry on the great tradition that the town has had.
All right. We give him a.
Thank you.
Did you want to ask him a question?
I just want to know where he went to undergraduate school.
Here we go.
You didn't answer. Is it one of those? Is it?
It's a, it's, I'm one of those Midwesterners, not necessarily Cincinnati, a little, a little bit west of there. I went to Creighton University.
Oh, awesome.
So, go Blue Jays. Undefeated in football over the last, you know, 90 years.
Oh, wow.
So, because they don't have a football team.
Oh.
Can I say something about Monmouth College?
Thanks, David. Appreciate it.
All right. Now let's go on to, we have an update from Sister Cities, and we're going to, I'm going to first bring up the new president of Sister Cities, Jackie Miles, and she's going to talk about recent activities. Grady, did you want to say something first?
Just that I have been working very closely with Jackie recently since she assumed the presidency, and clearly she's, knows, and we've talked about, the big shoes that she has to fill after Sharon Morgan, who has had a lot of leadership of this organization. But with that, I'll turn it back to, to Jackie to give her remarks.
Thank you.
Mayor Kavanaugh and town council members, members of the public, we're here tonight to celebrate Sister Cities, and we thank you for celebrating with us. Many of our board members are here tonight, and most of them have been active in this Fountain Hills organization for many years. The concept of Sister Cities, of course, began in 1956 when President Dwight Eisenhower, after having served as the Supreme Commander of European Operations in World War II, thought that maybe future wars might be prevented if individual citizens from various nations could exchange ideas and cultural experiences through a people-to-people program. If you read Alan Krukshank's column yesterday in the Fountain Hills Times, you know that it was his dream to find a sister city for our community. In 1996, Mayor Jerem, Jerry Miles asked Mr. Krukshank to chair a committee under the umbrella of the Civic Association. Alan and his committee finally chose Castorly, Belgium, as a people, as a good match for our town. And in May of 1998, Alan, Jerry, and I, Bob and Phyllis Horan, and Vice Mayor Mary Ann Wigasoff and her husband Cyril traveled to Belgium, where Castorly's Mayor Otten and Mayor Miles signed a letter of intent, and so our, our adventure began. In September 2000, our new mayor, Sharon Morgan, made our partnership official by signing the Sister City Agreement with Castorly. She then went on to Dierdorf, Germany, to explore the possibility of having a second sister city. And you may hear some more about that tonight from Christine Colley, who is our chair for Dierdorf. In June 2005, Mayor Wally Nichols signed the papers which formally proclaimed Dierdorf was one of our sister cities. And in November 2007, Mayor Nichols signed an agreement with Ataco El Salvador. And you will hear more about Ataco from our former council member and honorary consul, Enrique Melendez. When Sharon Morgan left office in 2003, she became chairman of the Fountain Hills Sister Cities Committee, and it soon became evident that since fundraising was a major activity, Sister Cities should be a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. So in 2007, Jerry Miles and Jean Lindsay did the necessary legal work to change the committee into the Fountain Hills Sister Cities Corporation. Sharon Morgan was elected president of the Sister Cities Board, and she has held that office until she recently opted to give it up last month. Last year, June of 2014, several of our board members visited Zamosch, Poland, where a formal Sister, Sister City Agreement was signed by Mayor Linda Kavanaugh. And you will hear more about Zamosch from Bogomel and Elizabeth Horsham. During these past 15 years, several of our high school students have benefited from the student exchange experiences with one or more of our four sister cities. These experiences have resulted in life These experiences have resulted in life-altering benefits for many of these youngsters. Our high school has a Sister Cities Club, and our board is very grateful for the cooperation and support that our school superintendents and teachers have contributed to our Sister Cities program throughout these exchanges. Twice now, our Fountain Hills Sister Cities program has received the Best Overall Program Award from Sister Cities International for cities with population less than 25,000. First award was awarded in 2009, and then again in 2011. Finally, Sharon Morgan is now Vice President of the State Sister Cities Organization. She and three other board members will be driving to Prescott a week from tomorrow for the State Sister Cities Convention. And Sharon will be hand-carrying letters from Mayor Kavanaugh and myself, requesting that Fountain Hills be the host for the 2016 state convention next spring. We thank you for supporting our program, and now we'll hear a little bit more from the chairs of our three sister cities.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Maybe I'll start with Council Melendez. Would you? It's okay, Rick, nobody saw that. Council Melendez is a former council member and the honorary consul of El Salvador.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor Brown, council members and staff. And thank you, Bev, Mayor, for putting me on the agenda. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting a couple of the new members. I congratulate you, Mr. DePorter, Mr. Magazine, and to you, Town Manager, I wish you the very best, and I hope you achieve the level of excellence that Paul Norton had as a town manager. Once a year, Mayor, I'm required by the Foreign Office to do a report on my sister cities under my jurisdiction. I have two. One in Prescott, Arizona, and the other one in my hometown of Fountain Hills. Also, I have to make a report to the Governor of Arizona and his or her executive staff. El Salvador mayor during, counsel during the past year has experienced a large migration to the north, especially with children, due to unfortunately a high crime factor. With his holiness Pope Francis' visit to the US coming up, and his stand on immigration, tolerance, and compassion, the issue, I believe, will become more acute, and we will have to make major decisions. This issue, as you know, is out of control in Europe. El Salvador has a population of 6.5 million people, a GDP of 47.5 billion, 1% 1.6% growth factor, and unemployment level at 7.5%. The minimum wage in El Salvador is $8.80, not per hour, per day. So it becomes very difficult to, to move around and, and develop the country when you have so much disparity of income between the classes. The, El Salvador is ranked on an economic freedom scale number 12 out of 30 countries in Central, South America, and the Caribbean. In 2014, tourism increased by 4.8% on a like-to-like basis, whereas global tourism traffic grew by 5%. And Ataco, our sister city, by the way, Mayor, I bring you greetings and respect from Mayor Gomez, who was re-elected again by wide margin, and he hopes to come back and to visit his dear Fountain Hills. At this time, Mayor, the mayor of Ataco had 16 students ready, qualified to come up to the US and to be with us in our schools again. It takes $660 for a round-trip ticket to come up from San Salvador to Phoenix. And as you know, some time ago, we had three students. And those students are now at the university level and doing very well, and speaking fluent English. I'm very pleased to announce, I'm sorry, Councilmember DePorter, that the University of Arizona, two weeks ago, I've been working on this program for about a year, is working with the president of El Salvador, and met with him, a group of the deans, to develop a criminology department in the Capitol. This is to help to defray some of the crime that is going on in our country, in my home country, and we are gonna be continuing to work with U of A. Sorry. Now, let's talk about Ataco. As new president said, Alan Krukshank in 1986 called Jerry Miles before he took office as mayor, and said, "You ought to develop a Sister Cities program." And both of them worked together, and the rest is history. And yesterday, I called, first of all, let me get a little bit emotional. As you know, we went through a war that killed 70,000 El Salvadorians. And in 1993, after the war, my wife and I, Pam, lived in, in Fountain Hills, we flew down to visit my family. And I said to my brother, who many of you know, "I wanna go down where the war hit the hardest," and that was downtown San Salvador, where the rebel army had control. And there was a picture that I, that I have had since then, and it's a picture of an older lady hunched back, and you can see the suffering in her heart. And I made a promise that day. I said, "Sometime, Pam, I'm gonna try and give back, not through my family, but through efforts that I can do before the Lord takes me upstairs." Well, it took me 18 years to have something happen, and came out of Fountain Hills, an angel came out of Fountain Hills High School. I don't know how many of you know Claire McWilliams, but I spoke with Claire McWilliams yesterday, and I said, "Claire, how did it happen? How did we get started with this project?" And here's the story. She said, and Vinka, he said, through the class that she had for many years, all the students were saying, "We ought to help the people of the Hurricane Ida, which devastated Haiti and a lot of Caribbean islands, Honduras and El Salvador." And Haiti was too dangerous. So then, she was driving into town, and guess what she saw, Mayor? She saw the Fountain Hills Sister City sign. And she said, "My gosh, I see a sign saying El Salvador." So then, she called Mayor Morgan at that time, a, a former mayor, Morgan. But before I go any further, Mayor, I know that you and the town manager have been speaking with Linda, with, I'm sorry, Jackie, about signs. And please, with all due respect, don't charge us $7,000 for the three signs. Any type of money that we can save, we'll bring children here, we'll bring people from Europe, from Germany, from Poland, so give us a break. Don't charge us those types of monies.
I'll tell you that, right now, we're not.
Thank you.
Grady shaking his head, no, we're not.
And God bless you. So then, the, the project moved on, and I had to make many presentations to the school board, to the superintendent of schools. We only had 11 kids signed up. But through you, and people like Jerry Miles and others, it, it got bigger and bigger. And my wife said, "What are you doing? You know, you're gonna get a heart attack, or get an ulcer, bringing all these kids, blondes who play soccer and volleyball into the jungles to build homes." Well, it finally happened that we had many fundraisers, we got approvals from, from the school board, from the students, and we ended up with bringing 61 people to El Salvador, 12 adults and 49 students. It was an accomplishment that will never be done in my lifetime, I believe. And today, I'm happy to report, we have 27 homes that are being built with electricity and running water. And as you can see, thank you, Bev, there's a picture of our current United States Ambassador with Sharon Morgan, and very proud to see our American flag to the left, which flies every day, next to the Salvadorian colors. Now, the last thing I wanna say is that, I don't know how many of you used to watch NBC Nightly News with Brian Williams. Well, when we all got back here, I had all the videos, I had all the pictures and all the tapes, and I called Brian Williams, because he had, at the end of each program, a segment called "Making a Difference." And I said, "I want Fountain Hills Ataco Project to be on Making a Difference." Then he said, "Okay," and his staff and so forth, "we need a letter from your congressman." And unfortunately, after calls and emails to his Washington office, Congressman Schwaaker let us down, and we couldn't get on Making a Difference for worldwide vision. But that's the way life is, and maybe that's why the American public has a low approval of our Congress. So finally, Mayor, I think that we're gonna move forward with the project. We appreciate your, your support, and thank you for putting us on the agenda. Let's move forward.
Council Melendez, we certainly appreciate all the work that you've done, because I know how hard you've worked, and Pam should know that she, it's very hard to stop you when you put your mind to do something.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
God bless you. Thank you.
Christine Colley, do you have a, would you like to come up and give us an update on Germany? Dierdorf, our other sister city?
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, for the opportunity to talk about my passion, and that is student exchange. Getting students from our town outside of this country and bringing students here. Students, student exchange with Germany has been going on for over 20 years, and once upon a time, we had exchanges of 30-some kids. Once upon a time, we also had over 100 students in the schools in Fountain Hills learning German. Ironically, the same year that we signed Dierdorf as the sister city, we stopped the German language school program at school. So, student exchange fell asleep there for a while, because we thought, "Okay, the kids aren't learning the language, they can't go." Well, the year when we played the World Cup in Germany, we thought about the kids that are coming from the United States to Germany, they don't really need to speak German, because in Germany, when you start the high school program at around 11, you start learning English. And the concept there with learning the foreign language is to learn the language until proficient. So when you start high school, you take a foreign language, you take it all the way through school. So that's why the students in Germany are very fluent in English. So we started that program then with Lynn Truby, and sent three music students to Germany. Boy, what a fun time they had. They took their musical instruments, they watched the celebrations of the World Cup, they hung out of their hotel window, they played their trumpets, and they had a wonderful time. Moving fast forward, this summer, 16 students from Fountain Hills visited Germany, Dierdorf, and toured all around southern Germany, and spent 11 days in the schools in Dierdorf. The next trip is planned next year, when Dierdorf students will come here. And so going forward, going forward, the plan is, one year we'll have outbound, and one year we'll have inbound. The students that go outbound, they raise funds, they cover their own expenses for travel, and then the host school, they will provide transportation and touring for the students. Inbound students, we do the same. We host them, and we support through fundraisers from Sister Cities, those students, to allow them to go to Grand Canyon and see other areas. I personally believe that that is the best way to get involved in a different culture. I am German, so I favor Germany, but any country that we can exchange with, and any country that we can welcome, these kids will be our future leaders. And they, it is such a pleasure to see them when they come or when they go, the excitement and the experiences that they have through those visits. So I thank you for the support, for your continued support. I want to invite you all to Oktoberfest coming up, September 25th and 26th. Help us promote it, because that's one of the fundraisers for Sister Cities. They sell the famous strudel there, so.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Christine. I know how dedicated you are to the students, and it is just the most wonderful program. I know how much you support the exchange, and also the, the jazz band, which we all love the jazz band, and, and we will continue to support them also. Thank you. All right, and now we will hear from our newest sister city. Elizabeth Horsham is going to come up and give us an update on Zamosz, Poland. One of my favorites, because I got to go there.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. My husband, Bogumianek Horsham, honorary consul of Poland, and myself, we have visited Poland in the month of September of this year, and visited our sister city, Zamosz. Since our visit last year and signing the papers, there is a new president of City of Zamosz, Mr. Andrzej Wnuk. He is familiar with the United States since he was working on his PhD in New York City. We have a very good meeting with him, and he expressed great interest in continuation what his predecessor, Mr. Zamoyski, started. He asked us to extend his warm greetings and best wishes to Town of Fountain Hills officials and Sister City officials. He arranged for us to have a meeting with the Director of Education in Zamosz, Mrs. Agnieszka Kowal. We have a good, productive meeting, and she is ready to actually start working on making plans to have students from Zamosz visit our town, and our students to visit Zamosz, hopefully soon. This year, Zamosz hosted Regional Olympics with the Olympic flame brought from Athens, Greece. At the opening ceremony, at the lightning of torch, we were introduced officially as members of Sister City of Fountain Hills. We visited Tatra Mountains, beautiful, City of Krakow, and capital of Poland Warsaw, where beside official visits, we have a private tour at the newly opened museum, a thousand year history of Polish youth. It's a magnificent museum, built with private donations of hundreds, millions of dollars. It's magnificent, worth going and seeing. And last, but not least, we would like to take this opportunity to thank Madame Meyer, Mayor, Post-President of the Board of Directors of Fountain Hills Sister City, Sharon Morgan, for her help and dedication, and it is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you, Council Horsham, for all the work that you did to unite Fountain Hills and Zamosz, Poland. I know we all enjoyed the trip, and I, of course... I know we all enjoyed the trip, and I, of course, it was a great honor to be there with President Zamoyski and to sign the papers there in his office in Poland. But of course, our most memorable occasion, and I know that this warmed Sharon's heart also, was when we stood in the square and we looked up and we saw the American flag flying over the town hall, and that was the first time it had ever flown over that town hall in Zamosz. So that was a real moving experience. I think we all just stood there crying, looking at it, but it was great, and it was a wonderful welcome, and I hope that the new president enjoyed the gifts that I sent, along with Mayor Miles's book, all about the Town of Fountain Hills, and some other nice little mementos I sent him from Fountain Hills. And maybe someday, he will come to visit us. Okay? All right. And all of this, we've heard, we've heard all about our sister cities, we've heard all about how this got started, and we are here also to honor former Mayor Sharon Morgan for all the work that she did for so many years. She is responsible for not only keeping the sister cities going, but expanding the program. She has such faith in the sister cities program that here's where we are today, that we have such an outstanding group of sister cities. But also, the exchange programs with the kids are absolutely the best that we could ever hope for. I mean, that the exchange of our students to have the opportunity to go to these countries and for them to come here, the exchange of culture and language, it is, it's just been remarkable, and I think that's the pride of our sister cities, what we are able to do with students. And Mayor Morgan, for, what is it, 20 years? How long have you been president? Were you president?
I think it's 10.
A lot. A long, long time. A long, long time. But of course, she's still, she hasn't really given it up, she's just gone on to the state level, which is also great for Fountain Hills, to have someone at our state level. So now, on behalf of the Town of Fountain Hills, I'd like to ask you to come up, and the representatives of the other sister cities, so I can present you with this plaque of appreciation.
Thank you so much for all the amazing work.
Oh, how nice. And a picture of all of us.
And a picture of the group.
Thank you.
There's the motley crew on the phone trip.
And this is for you.
Passas stars cheese. Como se dice, cheese? Quesa.
Can I say a few things?
Oh, I graduated.
All right, yeah. Councilman Magazine.
Yes, ma'am.
Monmouth College. That's where you went, that's five miles from my hometown, and my husband's family donated land for Monmouth College. Hello, Monmouth.
They don't have an engineering school.
I thank you for this honor, this plaque, it will go on my wall. I get credit for being a good leader and a tireless leader. A leader is only as good as their team. From the late Paul Norden, Town Manager Paul Norden, when I was mayor, afforded me the opportunity to have the state conference in Fountain Hills, the first conference in our new community center. We've gone on, we've done it one more time, and we're going for the third time next year. I couldn't have done any of the things that we've done without, like I said, a team. The team is board members, too numerous to mention, because I know I'd forget some. It is every town manager since the late Paul Norden, all the town councils since that time have supported us. Without that, we would be nothing. As I've said before you many times, this is a town organization. You can have a civic club or whatever without the blessings of the town. You cannot have a sister cities without the blessing of a town. So how could you not do good things with all that support? But I will say, some of my fondest memories in life, not all, but some of my fondest memories in life are pertaining to sister cities. The people that I've met, the places that afforded me to go, to see, to foreign lands, to meet with foreign people, to meet with people from foreign countries that are equal to our Secretary of State, to meet with ambassadors, I wouldn't have had this opportunity had it not been for sister cities. I stepped down because, as in everybody else's life, priorities change, and you have to reevaluate where you're going to put their time. And that is why I stepped down now as the chairman. I'm staying on the board, the local board, and I, as Ben said, I am on the state board. So I'm not moving away from sister cities, because that is a passion from my heart, is these kids. And the adults, too, but mainly the kids. We are a global society, we are a global world, and our kids especially, who are, in most cases, privileged children, need to see that everybody, their peers throughout the world, are not as privileged as they are. And maybe it, and I know it has brought some home from A-Taco when we came back from El Salvador. Particularly, I expected some tears from the girls, but to see the jocks and some of these guys with tears when they left down there, that was a success, because they got to see how the other world, part of the world, lives. And I think it's made all of them better and stronger. I thank you for this recognition, and I, I'm not going away, I'm just not calling the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, thank you to Mayor Miles. I know he's done so much also with the sister cities, and to the board that's here, and the board that couldn't be here. I know the board also does a lot of work, so we applaud you also for all the hard work that you've done with sister cities, and thank you. I know you're all volunteers. All right. Does anybody want to have any comments, or can I go on? No? Okay. All right. Do we have any speaker cards on call to the public?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And I have seven items on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept as written?
Mayor, so move. Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And anybody opposed?
Mayor, 6-0.
All right. Regular agenda items, first, starting with consideration of appointing three planning and zoning commissioners for two-year terms, beginning on October 1st, 2015, until September 30th, 2017. I move to appoint Mike Archambault, Susan Dempster, and Roger Owers to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, each for the term beginning on October 1st, 2015, and expiring on September 30th, 2017. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Any council discussion? All right. Want to thank the council members who took out the time to meet with the candidates. I want to thank everyone who applied. I also want to thank Mike Archambault, former councilman, and he's also been on planning and zoning for a while, and he's going to continue to do it, and that's great service. So thank you to all the candidates. And all in favor of these three?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 6-0. Mayor, I just want to let you know that Councilmember Hanson has left the meeting.
Oh, she's left the meeting. Okay. Thank you. Number nine is discussion with possible direction to staff regarding creating a potential sister cities commission. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, before you tonight, has requests to consider forming a sister city commission. The purpose of the sister city commission, as Sharon Morgan mentioned previously, is sister cities have relationships between themselves, and we've been very fortunate, we have an outstanding sister city corporation that has been very much involved and has done a great job and will continue to do a job, even, a great job, even if a sister city commission were formed. But these are relationships that the city or the Town of Fountain Hills has with its sister cities. It's really a town-to-town relationship. And what I am recommending is that the council consider directing staff to come back with a proposed resolution for you to consider to establish a sister city commission. Now, you might be asking yourself, what is the difference between a sister city commission and a, the current setup that we have right now with the sister cities corporation? Essentially, there are like three different models of sister cities and how these are organized across the country. In large cities that have strong mayors that actually run the cities, they typically have the sister city program contain part of the Office of Protocol or part of the mayor's office. In most mid-sized cities, the small cities, there's a combination of different models, and that is the current model we have now, which is the association, which I realize its corporation is the official title, which does the fundraising and such. And then also, you have sister city commissions. And the reason why I'm recommending a commission is we have this relationship that we have gone to the trouble of locking in a long-term relationship. And the reason why you want, in my opinion, an advisory committee is to actually shore up and ensure that the relationship lives on. And it's not to say that the organization we have here in town, I think that what I'm proposing is that there would be very much involvement and continued involvement because of all the outstanding work that has been done. We would have, on the recommended sister city commission, the membership would be made up of the president of the corporate, the sister cities corporation, and also another board member, to ensure that there's good communications. The charge would be a little bit different in that the, I would still see that the sister cities corporation would still be the fundraising arm, and would still be very much active in organizing and hosting events. But what would be a little bit different is that the sister cities commission would advise the council on, if, for instance, there were another sister city that was being considered. It would also work very closely with the staff and council to ensure that we are living up to our obligations, and also in hosting, visiting sister city delegations as well. So while it sounds like there's some overlap there, there is, but also, I believe, if in the event something were to happen to our sister cities corporation, this would ensure that we would continue with our obligation to continue. And that's all we're trying to do here. And of course, this is up to the council to consider this. If you're interested in this, we can come back with a proposed resolution, and you can vet it and determine if this is something you want to do or not. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Questions for Grady?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilwoman Legere.
Yes. Jackie, would you mind coming to the podium? Thank you, appreciate it. I know you've had an opportunity to kind of noodle on this and chat with our town manager about that. I just wanted your input, as a sitting president, what are your thoughts? How do you feel about a commission being formed?
I think I'd be in favor of it, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Are we doing a motion on this, or is this for discussion tonight?
Direction.
Just direction? And Vice Mayor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I see no harm in forming a commission to assist and participate in the sister city organization. I think it would be a good thing to have our own commission jointly with the corporation to continue the sister city movement. I would like to direct staff to bring forth a proposal.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Are there any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
Any council discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 6-0.
Okay. Congratulations.
One more time.
There we go. Consideration of a contract with American Meeting Services incorporating doing business as AMS billing services to implement the environmental fee. Grady?
Yes. Mayor and council, you recall at the last council meeting, the staff gave a presentation on this contract and also gave quite a bit of background information on this. I've asked the finance director just to share a few remarks about this contract, as it just relates to this contract. And also, I've asked Raymond Reese, our environmental manager, to also talk about the importance of this environmental fee as it relates to supporting a number of the environmental programs and projects that we have budgeted in the current fiscal year. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Rudolfi.
Mayor, council members, at the last meeting, I gave you some background and history about how we arrived at the direction that I was given to implement a environmental fee of $3 per parcel per month. Just without going back through that detail, which I'm sure you remember quite well, but just a brief couple of points. This will be the 20th time that the council has discussed this matter or had it presented before them. If this contract is not approved, Town Manager will have to direct staff to essentially reduce our operating budget by $500,000 or 3.6% in order to cover the costs that were planned to be funded with this environmental fee. In addition, if the contract is not approved tonight, I do not believe that the only bidder that submitted a bid on the request for proposals would be willing to extend their offer past this meeting. In the, in your packet tonight, there was a handout that listed all of the proposed items that would be funded by this fee, and our environmental manager, Raymond Reese, can go through those if you desire.
Before Mr. Rudolfi sits down, were there any questions specifically about the contract or how this would work, before Mr. Reese comes up?
Councilman Porter?
I just had a question. When you were here last, we talked about return envelopes and how they would, what they would potentially look like, who this bill would look like it's coming from, should we contract with them. Would it still be the case that it would be an American Metering Service return envelope that they'd be getting to submit the bill, or actually the bill itself, where it would look like it's coming from?
We haven't had that discussion yet, but it would be my expectation that the bill would be mailed out in a Town of Fountain Hills envelope.
Got it.
Payment, we're anticipating. Payment, we're anticipating is going to be directed back to AMS. And so therefore, I would expect that the return envelope would go directly to AMS with their address and return, and return address. But the original billing should come, I believe, from a Fountain Hills business envelope.
That's good. I was just hoping, in hopes that that would encourage more open, opening of the envelopes instead of just straight to the recycling bin. So thank you. It'd be nice if even on the return envelopes, if it had American, or Town of Fountain Hills care, care of American, just even more that shows us linked to it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have just one question. I was reading all the material in here, and I know that they are going to have all the information about residence, credit card, all of that. I didn't see anything in here, or is there anything written anywhere that says that they are not allowed to use that information for any other purposes other than the billing? I mean, is that something that's usually written into a contract like this?
I would have to defer to, to legal, but I do not believe there was any specific restrictions in the request for proposal that we issued that prevented them from doing that.
So I'm, I'm not sure what you, so you're saying that they could use the names and of the people in town for other purposes?
In the discussions I've had with the vendor, they made no indication that they would do so, but the RFP does not require them to maintain confidentiality of that information.
Oh. So, so this company is going to have the names and all the personal information of everybody in town who owns a parcel, along with credit card information, and there's nothing written in there that says that that's confidential and they can't use it in any other way except for the billing?
I would have to reread the contract, but nothing is coming to mind that there was a specific clause in there that required that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Councilman Legay?
I don't thi, this may not answer your question, but I believe there is a condition in the contract that talks about securing confidential information. And I know that they have to have, part of the contract is that that information needs to be secure in terms of their technology, but I'm not sure specifically if it talks about usage. And if it doesn't, is that a stipulation that we could put into a motion if it moves in this direction? So I think we could handle it that way. Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine?
It is with great trepidation. It's the 20th time it's been discussed. I'd like to see what I can do to keep it from having a 21st time. So I'm going to make a motion that the, that we approve the contract with American Metering Services, Inc., for billing services to implement the environmental fee adopted by council November 20th, 2014, with the added, with an addendum that we look seriously at how we can maintain confidentiality for any information that's provided by our citizens to the company.
Second.
All right. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Council discussion? All right. I think we need a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
I did not support this in the beginning, but I will abstain on this vote. Excuse me?
Council rules will mean that you're now voting with the majority, whatever that is.
And I will rescind my vote of abstention and vote no.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Mayor, four two.
All right. Thank you, Craig. Discussion with possible direction to staff relating to league resolutions adopted by the 2015 Resolution Committee at the August 18th, 2015 Business Meeting for possible support by the Fountain Hills Town Council. Craig? Craig? Grady?
Yes.
Want you to start?
Sure.
Okay.
Before the council are approximately 14 final adopted resolutions that were adopted by the, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns at their most recent annual conference. There was a, there was a committee that helped initially vet these, and then these were the ones that actually made it through the process. This is really a critical part of the league. A lot of these resolutions actually become either bills or influence the legislature or attempt to on areas critical to local government in Arizona. And so I would encourage the council to, to give staff direction, either to come back or to continue to support and follow these with the league, because the league will typically try to see if they can get sponsors for legislation as a result of these resolutions. So with that, I'd go ahead and, and ask if the council has any, any of these that they have in mind that they would like to provide direction to staff on.
Okay. And I'll just add that, being on the executive committee, we are of the league, we're going to be having a meeting shortly to further discuss these. So even if you don't have one right now that you're thinking about, or you want to get more information before the town commits to it, you can email me at any time with your thoughts on any of these. And I'd be happy to not only get you further information from the league, because some of these are not quite self-explanatory, some of them have unintended consequences that you might be concerned about, then I'd be happy to bring those concerns to the league at our next meeting. Councilman Legay?
Mayor, if I may, to save correspondence between you and I in that regard, there are a couple I'd just like to put into the record. Number four, which is reasonable limitations on public information requests. Number 10, restore Arizona Park Heritage Funds. And number 12, FAA Committee to Consider Air Flight Route Changes. So those would be three that, in particular. I mean, I support most of the other ones, but those, those I'd like to highlight. Thank you.
Okay. Absolutely. And those were definitely on my list. And we discussed those at length, and those were just about unanimously passed by the resolution committee. So those should be ones that will be passed on. And I know that the legislature is looking at the public records request because of the hardship that it's brought on some of the cities like Yuma. So they will be, they will be trying to, they're right now actually meeting in committee and trying to work out something that will pass muster with the lawyers. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Well, definitely, anything else between now and, and my meeting? If you have any other comments, I'd be happy to bring those all to the executive committee or concerns and get any questions answered that I can for you. All right then, let's see. Council, direction to the town management? I don't have anything except what we discussed. Okay. And council request a report on recent activities or any other comments? I just have two quick ones and very quick. The first is, I, I, on behalf of the town council, I want to say, which is Happy New Year to all of our Jewish residents. May the new year bring you peace and prosperity during this season of Rosh Hashanah. I also want to wish the Harvest Bible Chapel a happy birthday. They had their one-year celebration last Sunday. My husband and I went to represent the town, and they, they are already heavily involved in our crisis response team, helping to fund that for us. If you remember, they were responsible for the snow in the park last Christmas that they donated for the kids. So certainly Harvest Bible Chapel is a, is a wonderful church, and we wish them happy birthday and many more years in Fountain Hills. And Councilman DePorter has something.
I said, one thing I was, last week, or this week, I was asked to participate with Dr. Patrick Sweeney and the Fountain Hills Unified School District has created a marketing and communications task force with community members, teachers, parents, staff, to better position the school district in the valley as a, as the, one of the premier choices in the valley. So we're excited to, excuse me, to see where the conversation goes and where the, the team members can help take, take that committee. So we're excited to be cheering, cheering on the school district.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Then I get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for everyone who hung in there with us. Mm-hmm.